Roll call, please.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conquist.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leeder.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, we have a quorum. First, we need receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone who has any written communication from the public? If you do, would you bring it up to the clerk? Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. This is the time when we give an opportunity for the public to speak. You have three minutes to speak. You need to give your name. Address is optional. City clerk, is there anyone who signed in?
As far as I know, Mayor Protem, no one has signed in for tonight.
Okay, no one signed in. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak who didn't get an opportunity to sign in? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dials? Seeing no announcements, we'll move... Oh, Alderman Dunn has an announcement.
Sorry. I just want to mention that the York Radio Club is holding an annual amateur field day this Saturday. It's take... will take place at the Elmhurst Fire Department Training Facility, 910 North Addison. It's actually going quite long. It's Saturday and Sunday, so drop by at any time there. This is a test to... for the radio club to support emergency response.
Thank you. If you haven't gone to that, it's well worth your time. The other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any alderman who'd like to remove something to vote no or has a question on an item on the consent agenda? Alderman York.
Item 6.7.
We're going to remove item 6.7. Anyone else? That's all? Roll call on the remaining consent agenda, minus item 6.7. Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry. A motion. Alderman Toledo, Alderman York seconds. Then roll call.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, no absents.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda passes, minus item 6.7. Clerk, would you read the title for report 6.7, please?
Okay, yes. 6.7, a report, the Seventh Annual Elmhurst Cycling Classic Bicycle Race. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee to approve the DCF Seventh Annual Elmhurst Cycling Class Bicycle Race on July 26, 2019. The committee recommends the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed by Danny Palomsky Chair, Scott Levin Vice Chair, and Norm Leeder.
I need a motion. Alderman Palomsky, second by Alderman Levin. Any comments?
No, I defer to Alderman York.
Alderman York.
Thank you. I just asked to have a poll because I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Can I just do that?
We do a roll call for seven... 6.7.
For approval of the report.
For approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, York.
Present.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
That's thirteen ayes, one present, no nays, and no absents.
Thirteen ayes, no nays, no absents. That item passes, and we'll move on to reports from appointed and elected officials. I have no report. I know the city manager has a number of reports they'd like to go through.
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a few things going on. The neighborhood roll call program is up and going again, and this Tuesday at 6:30, the roll call will be at Madison and Fairfield. Please look to the Police Department Facebook page for updates on other roll calls. This Sunday, the Heritage Foundation will be sponsoring the old-time baseball games. At the right term, Dave? That's 2:00 PM at Elmhurst College in the quad behind the Ford Center. And we welcome all players, all spectators for that, and we just hope the weather holds out unlike it did for practice. You should have all received an email from us that was sent to Superintendent Moyer at District 205. That was regarding the Madison facility. As Mayor said at the last meeting, all of our facilities worked the way they should to hold the water. But between the constant rain this spring and the soccer teams that have been using that, that's been pretty beat up, and we recognize that. So, I sent a letter to the superintendent to let him know that it is our full intent to come in and restore that the way it should be, that the conditions there are unacceptable right now, and we recognize that. And so Superintendent and I had some back and forth on it, and I know that his staff is looking to it. We're probably going to meet with them in the near future to talk about what those improvements are and how they can best be implemented after the soccer teams are done using that. A couple other things that I have. On the agenda, we had the annual ComEd report, and that was provided. It was a summary of that, some of the pages from the annual report. And as you can see, the number of outages is slightly up this year. I met with our ComEd rep, they recognize that. But as you look at the length of time, that's not as... It didn't increase significantly as the number of outages did. But if you look at the list of the outages, a lot of them were intentional, which means that somebody needed the power shut off to a certain area to make an improvement or something like that. And then quite a few of them were underground faults that they had to fix. And then the last page in the report was the work that they've either done or are going to do 18 and 19. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to reach out to Ms. Thomas to get any further clarification on that. And then the last thing that I have before I ask Erin Jason to come up is an update on Springfield legislation. And I'm just going to try to hit the highlights here because it was quite a whirlwind at the end of session. So, with the help of DuPage Mayor and Managers and IML, we monitored, opined, and when appropriate, gave our position on various pieces of legislation. As I said, I'm going to try to recap that, that session, and really more accurately, I'd say the last week of session where a lot of these initiatives were voted on. The first one that was approved was a change to minimum wage. That was the first major legislative initiative of the governor. And under the new law, the minimum hourly wage will first increase from eight and a quarter to nine and a quarter on January 1st of 2020, then to $10 an hour on July 1st of 2020. And that follows by dollar increases per hour on January 1st of each year until it becomes $15 an hour in 2025. Now, clearly, that affects the city and some of the employees that work for us. But it's the law of the state, and we will follow that certainly. The next one that I want to highlight is the income tax. Graduated income tax that will impose higher income taxes on those with higher wages, which will replace the state's current flat tax income... excuse me, flat income tax. It doesn't affect the 2020 budget for the state. But the General Assembly passed a constitutional amendment that would replace the state's flat income tax with a graduated income tax. And this proposal will be put on the 2020 general election ballot for voter approval. And there's a certain number of voters that need to approve that. There's two different guides. So, that's out to 2020. That should affect city revenues if it... if the state starts to collect more income tax for the cut that we get. But again, that's subject to ballot approval in 2020. There were a couple of proposals which didn't pass that I want to highlight. The first one was lead service lines. In February, Chicago Senator introduced a bill which would mandate the identification and removal of all lead service lines in a community water suppliers' control. For Elmhurst, that was somewhere between 1,200 and 1,400 lead service lines at a cost estimate of about $12 to $14 million. Elmhurst, DuPage Mayor and Managers, IML opposed the legislation because it represented an enormous and costly unfunded mandate for all water suppliers. Myself and Paul Burris represented DuPage Mayor and Managers along with the City of Aurora to help collaborate on a better bill. That same senator then filed an amendment to reduce the scope of the legislation and only require the owners and operators of each water supply to develop and submit lengthy material inventory and replacement plan to the IEPA. A lot of advocacy efforts helped us. The senator that had put this forward agreed not to pass the legislation out of the Senate without an accompanying revenue in the Capitol bill. And the Capitol bill did not include a funding for lead service line replacement. So, the initiative did not advance in the General Assembly, but it could come back at any time. The reason that Aurora was involved is they are the, I believe, the second largest community out... the first largest outside of Chicago with number of lead service lines. And they had an estimate of somewhere north of $200 million to replace all the lead lines in their community. Interestingly, I believe Chicago was exempt from this piece of legislation. Another one that the IML helped to defeat was a legislative measure that would have created the Local Government Residential Inspection Limitation Act, which provided that no unit of local government could conduct physical inspections of residential property without voluntary consent of the owner or occupant of the property, a warrant, or a court order. Provisions of the legislation would have also preempted home rule authority. This was an initiative from the Illinois Association of Realtors. I can only think it had something to do with inspections that are needed for the turnover of property. So, again, because it preempted home rule authority, that was a big issue for us. One of the big ones that's out there is recreational cannabis. And I know I've gotten a lot of questions from residents. I think aldermen have started to get questions about that as well. So, in... once the governor signs it in effective, I believe, July, it would be legal to smoke marijuana in one's own home and on-site in some cannabis-related businesses. However, use is prohibited in any public place, including streets or parks, in any motor vehicle, on school grounds, near someone under the age of 21, and near and on-duty school bus driver, police officer, firefighter, or corrections officer. So, any person, business, or landlord can prohibit use on private property, and Illinois colleges and universities will also be allowed to ban marijuana use. Now, there are some other provisions that go along with this. So, possession limits are for those who are 21 years and older, and they can possess 30 grams of raw cannabis, 500 milligrams or less of THC of cannabis-infused products, and five grams of cannabis product in concentrated form. You can... people with medical cannabis permits can cultivate up to five cannabis plants at home. There was a... I think that was a big sticking point for a lot of legislators because the initial versions of the bill allowed for home grow at any location. And so, they pared that down to medical users only. Municipalities can enact ordinances to prohibit or significantly limit a cannabis business establishment's location. So, that's very significant for municipalities who want to opt out of this. Municipalities may enact reasonable zoning ordinances or resolutions regulating cannabis business establishments. They can enact reasonable ordinances or rules governing the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis business establishment operations, including minimum distance limitations from colleges, universities, schools, and other sensitive areas. We cannot prohibit the home cultivation by medical cannabis patients. And then last, municipalities that do allow cannabis sales in their communities can, by ordinance, implement a tax up to 3% in quarter percent increments. So, that's a benefit if municipalities choose to allow cannabis sales in their community. And then last, I would just note that driving under the influence of cannabis remains illegal. They did not change that. Law enforcement officials may use validated roadside tests, chemical tests, or standardized field sobriety tests approved by the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration. And that was another sticking point for us in the legislation was how are we going to be able to protect it? And how much is that going to increase our enforcement? Next, I want to move to the Capitol bill. So, the Capitol bill had two different components, including two different revenue increases. First was a horizontal capital package, which means roads, bridges, and transportation infrastructure. And this is funded through increases to the state's motor fuel tax, among other sources. Lawmakers bumped it from 19 cents a gallon to 38 cents a gallon starting in July, and added an automatic annual inflation increase. So, based on current inflation projections, gas tax will rise almost a penny a year. So, the gas tax is projected to raise 1.2 billion, with the state bringing in 560 million and local municipalities gaining 650 million. So, with the increase in motor fuel tax, we do... we expect to see an increase for Elmhurst revenues. The second piece was a vertical capital package, meaning new buildings and repairs. And that's funded through a variety of new revenue sources, including higher taxes on video gaming, a tax hike on cigarettes and vaping, and a new tax on parking garages, and some other smaller sources. These have been appropriated into different amounts. The most significant would be 18 billion for transportation costs. And then the next is 2.1 billion for Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for grants to local communities for capital improvements, which is significant. I'll get to that in just a second. And then it's broken down a little bit more after that. So, we searched the Capitol bill, and we found a few Elmhurst beneficiaries within there. The first is the History Museum looks to get a $286,000 grant for our HVAC system that we repaired four years ago. We were promised this money in 2015, '16, and so they've re-appropriated that to us. We are also in line to get $300,000 for, in the bill, it's termed pedestrian street construction and other infrastructure. We believe this to be the multi-use path over Route 83. We've not confirmed that just yet. We're also in line to receive $150,000 for costs associated with infrastructure, public security, and safety improvements, $250,000 for Spring Road Streetscape, which is a reimbursement grant for work we did a number of years ago, $100,000 for West Avenue Construction, which was a job that we did a number of years ago, even though we're working on a different portion right now. And then the museum grant. Also in there, District 205 is getting $10,000 for Safe Routes to School, a program, and $250,000 for building additional classrooms at Emerson School, which I too believe was a past project that they're being reimbursed for. And then last, YMCA is getting $20,000 for building repairs. Now, in addition to this, I've been in contact with Representative Deanne Mazzaki regarding the Capitol bill. She said it's not quite settled in Springfield yet. And so, I sent her a list of our priorities in hopes that if there's an opportunity to get some additional funding, we may get some additional funding. And within that includes some additional public safety equipment that Springfield's looking to fund. So, the last item that I'll touch on is the gaming increase, which I noted pays for some of these grants. So, the new bill would issue a new casino... new casinos, excuse me, in the city of Chicago, Danville, Waukegan, and Rockford, as well as one in Williamson County and one in the south suburbs to be located in one of six Cook County townships on the south side. It would also allow existing Illinois casinos to increase their number of gaming positions significantly. Horse track... horse racing tracks will all be allowed to have up to 1,200 seats. And also, it will increase the maximum number of video gaming machines to six from five per licensed location. And so, that's the local municipal restaurants and bars that have local gaming. That is going from five positions to six positions, and also increasing the maximum bets from four... from $2 to $4. So, this bill hikes the state's 30% tax on video gaming by 3%. And then the resulting 33% would go up another 1% in 2020. And all of those tax hikes would go towards funding the governor's capital plan. So, those are some highlights. There are... I think there were over 8,000 bills that were introduced in Springfield. So, it was a very busy session down there. I only scratched the surface with the significant ones. If anybody has questions on other bills, please let me know. I'm happy to gain as much insight to them as possible. And let me just make sure that was all that I had. Sorry for the lengthy report.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would like to turn it over to Erin Jason for an economic development update.
Before we do that, is there any questions for the city manager as to what he just reported? Seeing none, okay. Erin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay. Over the last year, Elmhurst welcomed new food and beverage establishments from Nashville Hot Chicken to Acai Berry Bowls and pretty much everything in between. We also welcomed several experiential businesses where you could do anything from soar like an ninja warrior, build a farm bench, paint a picture, or solve a mystery. Thanks to the mayor, you, the city council, our city staff, and our economic development partners, we've continued to work to protect and enhance those investments in economic activity. Right now, we have $189 million in active commercial permits. So much is happening in Elmhurst right now that we'd be here for a week and a half if I was to tell you all of it tonight. Some of the areas I'm not going to touch on include the Business Park. Something I want to tell you about that, though, is that McMaster Car, one of our largest employers in the city, is working right now on their active growth plan. They have a $25 million investment right now in a new data center, as well as a new parking deck, all as part of a future plan to continue to grow. Kai and Kate Couture and Spring Road has doubled their size over the last year after seven years in business in Elmhurst, which is exactly what we want to see, a local business continuing to grow within Elmhurst. Spring Road will also be welcoming a new store, Crush Collectibles. Any day now, actually, they should be opening there at 510 South Spring. So, lots of exciting things happening. New Homestar, an office user in town that you're all familiar with, received Chicago Crane's Business Top Place to Work this year in their category number three overall. So, just great things happening all over town. I want to start with Butterfield Road and that corridor. You may be aware that Burger King and McDonald's are both in the process of remodeling their locations from top to bottom, inside out. They'll be adding public sidewalks in front of both. Both will have double drive-throughs. The models at both of these stores are one of their first models for both McDonald's and Burger King. So, we're expecting great new establishments there. I put on the CBD Kratom shop at 203 East Butterfield. I know that created quite a stir. I think the city manager's report kind of covered what's happening with recreational marijuana. I just want to confirm that this is not a placeholder store for recreational marijuana. That was one of the number-one questions I received when this store opened. CBD and Kratom are both legal in the state of Illinois right now. You can find them in multiple locations, from CVS and Walgreens to pet stores, liquor stores, grocery stores. These products are everywhere right now, and they are being watched to make sure that they're in compliance with the laws that go with them. And then this fall, there'll be new... 58 new condo buildings or townhome buildings, as you see. This is at Elm Creek. They're under construction right now. And then I also put a picture here of the upstairs of Community Bank of Elmhurst at 330 West Butterfield. If you haven't been down there in a while, they have completely redesigned their upstairs to a business zone. I just want to use this as an example of just great things that our businesses are doing to help keep business and people who work from home businesses staying in Elmhurst and utilizing Elmhurst spaces. So, if you are a business customer of the bank or you have a business loan through them, you can use this coworking space. And I've been up there when it's been active, and people are really excited about the potential up there. I'm going over to Elmhurst Crossing at St. Charles and 83. Last time we spoke, I announced that Kmart was closing. That was a few years ago. That was 103,000 square feet of retail space. We're happy that at-home store moved in last summer. They are doing quite well here in Elmhurst. They're very excited about the recognition and the sales that are coming out of that store. Sadly, Elmhurst Crossing is the perfect example right now of what's happening in big-box retail for no reason, but necessarily connected with Elmhurst. We have stores that are closing. So, Dress Barn announced that they're closing all 674 of their locations nationwide. Our Dress Barn at Elmhurst was a high performer for them. That did not matter. Right now, as actually as of today, the latest, we do anticipate that they will close in December of this year in the Elmhurst location. Party City is another example where they decided to close Carte Blanche several stores across the nation. The Elmhurst one was one of them. We anticipate them to close within the next 30 days. Party City is an interesting case. They have a 10-year lease for the space that we're only two years into. So, they will be paying rent on that space, but they prefer to vacate now because they think it'll be easier to sublease when it's vacant. And there has been quite a lot of interest in both those locations so far, so that's the good news there. But this will be one of the highest vacancies, if you don't count the at-home vacancy with Kmart, that transition that they've ever seen at this shopping center here. Along the Lake Street Corridor, we're seeing great improvements. The Elmhurst BMW, I believe many of you have been there already to experience either at their grand opening or a chamber event. They're doing exactly what they told us they were going to do. They were able to double their inventory. Kurt Shealy's reported to us that he's had several, what he calls, 10-car Saturdays, where multiple cars are going out of the lot on the same day, exactly what we wanted them to do. Their used BMW store and their additional auto mechanic section has both also grown in sales and use. Again, great things happening there. As most of you know, the arena space at 630 West Lake has been taken over by a company called Throw Nation. Throw Nation plans to open this fall. They are a custom-guided entertainment venue. They operate throughout the U.S. in different locations. They will have a full restaurant and bar. They will also offer activities such as axe-throwing, curling, football bowling, among others. In the North Yard Corridor, there's so much going on, I could do like just 10 days on this alone. This screen shows just a few of the things that are happening. Zen Witch is under new ownership, same recipes, revitalized space. They're changing their logo, they're getting new signage. I like to use them as an example of why we put a sign grant incentive in place that started this year. They're the perfect example of someone's sign that you couldn't even read when you're going past because it's so faded out and old. They'll be replaced with a brand-new sign this year. The Convenient Food Mart, which has been there for many years, is changing hands to Elmhurst Food and Liquor. It will still carry convenience items, Lotto, milk, et cetera, but they will have an extended liquor license for their space now. Amita Health, Sitter Studio, Code Ninjas, just a few more of the businesses that are moving up there. Pathway Community Church is in the York Center Plaza. They're doing similar to what Brew Point Coffee did a few years ago, taking a loading dock space, converting it into usable space. So, it's a new retail space in the community. Something that's really interesting about that York Center Plaza, it's been pretty vacant for a long time. Over the last few years, they've seen the most increase in use since before the recession. They are over 80% occupied at this point in time. They are over 80% occupied at this point in time and have contracts under two of the other spaces that are open right now, which will leave them with only six spaces, which includes the largest piece being upstairs. So we're very excited about that. Also, North York corridor, Johnny and Tony's Italian Beef and Pizzeria has opened. That's at 426 North York. Manja Napoli has opened at 940 North York. And that was formerly Melina's Trattoria or Nancy's Pizza, under new ownership. And of course, Culvers is in the midst of building out their new location in Elmhurst. This picture is about two weeks old of Culvers. Now, if you go by, they have a lot more going on even than this. They are on track to be open in mid-August. This is a conceptual plan by the owners of Yorkies. They also own the You Do It Car Wash that's right next to them, to the south. They plan to take that down because they also own the Gem Car Wash. Taking down that car wash will give them more parking and will also allow them to expand their seating area by 1,500 square feet and add an additional 2,500 square feet to their kitchen and prep space. So this is a business that continues to grow and continues to grow well. So we're excited for them. And last but not least, I want to talk to you a little bit about the downtown. The downtown city center is the heart of a community. I don't have to sell any of you on that. The city continues to proactively approach ways to facilitate overall economic health here, including pedestrian upgrades, like ADA-compliant tree rates and the new crosswalks that you see on North York. Those crosswalks will eventually go on Addison Avenue and on South York. South York is under repaving right now, so if you've been on the south side of the tracks, a little tricky right now. And that should be done in the next few weeks. Here's a couple of the businesses that are changing in downtown. York Theater continues to reinvent themselves. One of the things they're doing is reinvesting in their theater seating. They put in heated reclining seats in three of their theaters. As you know, you've granted them a liquor license, so they'll be changing their concession. Spavia is coming to Elmhurst. They'll be before a zoning and planning commission tomorrow night. They will be taking the southern portion of the north lobe of the Elmhurst 255 retail space. So from Curito to the Public Plaza, Spavia is a resort-quality customized spa experience. Elmhurst Premier Childcare, they were originally going to move next to City Hall, just to the south of us. They actually ended up purchasing 180 North York, where West Suburban Office Products used to be. So they're building out and they're right now waiting for DCFS approvals. It is a completely green center, kind of a one-of-a-kind in Illinois. Bread and Butter Home Boutique opened this year. Sweet Berry Bowls opened this year. And Maxine's Handbags and Accessories, they used to be a pop-up shop half the year. They are now open full-time at 122 North York. So this next slide shows a whole bunch of other businesses that have either opened, expanded, or grown within the downtown in the last year. This does not even hit all of them. Several of these are office users, like Dewberry Architects, Afetto &amp; Company, Lightlife. Lightlife is a great example of why we want office users for density in the downtown. When they first moved into 180 West Park last year, they had three employees. Now they have over 45. And they are continually looking for space to continue to grow. We've heard from restaurants who know, hey, those folks from Lightlife came. If you don't know, Lightlife makes vegan and vegetarian meat products, so faux meat. Apparently, their employees don't necessarily always abide by that because they're often seen in Cottage Hill Station with nice juicy burgers in their hands. Something neat about all these spaces that I'm showing you, last time I gave an update to the city council, we talked about how much vacancy there was in the downtown. In 2016, there was over 65,000 square feet of vacancy in our downtown. Right now, we have less than 20,000 square feet of available space in the downtown. Of that 20,700, or 7,600 square feet of it are in the brand-new Mark Building. So brand-new just came online two weeks ago for true contract negotiations. And 3,000 of that is the Pink Elephant Space, which Edward Elmhurst Hospital decided to take offline. So we have, without that, 9,000 square feet that we've been kind of playing with over the last year. This is very exciting for my cop and I on a regular basis. The only time I hate it is when someone calls us and says, we really want to be in Elmhurst, Aaron? How do we get there? How do we find a space? And right now, it's just kind of a waiting list of who could fit where. And that's pretty exciting and a lot of fun for me. You may have seen this on board docs. This is the potential Elm Center development at 233 North York. Actually, I think I skipped a slide, but that's okay. This calls for 7,525 square feet of new commercial real estate where the former Rainbow Restaurant was, just north of us right now. They would have 40-plus parking spaces on site. It would be divisible for multi-tenant use. They have been talking to tenants already and are prepared to move forward with this with the approval of the city council. This site is more than 75 feet of frontage, which triggers the new PUD, the Planned Unit Development Ordinance. So they've already met with staff. They've met with the DPNZ. And right now, they're preparing to meet with the public and have a, host a public community meeting. Once they do that, they'll do their formal request with the city. And actually, I'm going to go back one real quick. You're all familiar with FFC at this point in time. They are up and running. They are hitting the numbers according to their local management that we hear, but they've told us of 1,200 unique users a day, give or take, on any given day. This is super exciting. It's really changed the face of Addison, just as the mayor always said, you know, find me a York Theater on Addison. We found that York Theater and it's really proving out. And of course, transit-oriented development. I can never talk enough about the great things associated with the density that comes with developments like this. This is a mixed-use building, the Mark. They had their grand opening just two weeks ago. It's 165 units. Of those units, 40% are already leased. That does not mean that they're fully occupied at this point in time, but 40% are leased. Every night, you can kind of see more and more lights going on in the building. It's really neat. They do have 7,600 square feet of retail, as I mentioned before. They are hoping for a restaurant user on the strong corner. And then they have up to three different individual units going along Addison. The condos at the hill are well underway. And the picture I have here is from about two weeks ago. Right after I took it, they put up another floor. So they're already about four floors high. This is 23 units, all three bedrooms or two bedrooms with a den. First floor retail, kind of smaller, maybe an office user. They'll be at 140 West Park. 195 North Addison, you can see their elevator towers coming out of the ground right now as you look out the windows. 20 all-corner units, all three bedrooms and a den. And they will have some first-floor retail. And the Lennar Group Project at 183 North Addison, 214 units, apartments, majority one-bedroom or studio with an alcove. It'll be seven stories in the front, eight in the back. And they will not have retail, but they will have user space, it's active user space on the first floor. They will be going through the incentive process with the city council. And that's all I had for tonight, Jim.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Aaron? Alderman Brann.
Thank you. And thank you, Aaron, for presenting this. I always look forward to these presentations. It's a good thing to communicate, not only to us, but to the public on what is going on around town because even if there's one store vacant, that's too many for a lot of residents. We hear about it all the time, that what's up with the vacancy, especially in the downtown area. You already answered most of my questions, touching on vacancy back 2016 relative to today. I only wanted to ask about a couple of things. I know we, as the city council, are planning, and the city are planning on doing a traffic study, but has there been feedback to the city to date about the traffic due to the new developments? Not only the new, but everything that's downtown now especially, as well as parking? Have you or the city received any positive and/or negative feedback on either of those, parking or traffic?
I'll start with positive. I've heard lots of positive about the Addison Deck, lots of use of the Addison Deck. Always a concern that there's not enough parking on the south side of the tracks. I hear that from a lot of our business owners. We're always looking at where else can we squeeze a parking spot on the south side of the tracks. In terms of traffic and congestion, more related to construction than development that I have personally been talked to about.
The only other question I had, which it's not a retail business, but it was debated at length in the city, where is, if you know or need to defer maybe, Elmhurst Extended Care? Is that moving forward now? Do we have any information on that as we sit here today?
City manager.
Yes, they're still in the design phase of that. We've had some contact back and forth with the owner and his architect. Mike, did they submit plans? Or do they have submitted plans? So we've done some review on that as well.
Great, thank you. I just want to say thanks again for this. I love seeing these presentations more often. The better for me personally. A lot of great things happening all over town, not only downtown, north side, south side. It seems like we're seeing a lot turnover and a lot of exciting businesses come to Elmhurst, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just make a couple of real quick comments. This economic development is one of the things that the city of Elmhurst, it's so critical that we're doing. This is how we build the tax base in the community. This is how we help all the other taxing bodies. We're able to keep our taxes low, especially property taxes, because of all the exciting things that we're able to do. So I thank the economic development team that's here and the team that's behind the scenes that we don't see all the time. So thank you so much for all the work you've done. And this is exciting, and this is how we keep our taxes under control to help out the other organizations, the other taxing organizations. So thank you. City manager, anything else?
No other reports, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other reports from the council? Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report something I talked to several of my colleagues about today. Over the last week, I personally have met with a couple of members of the school board. It's been a hot topic. The mayor has highlighted, and he asked several of us to reach out. And I just want to report that we had some very positive conversations. And I feel, I feel a genuine sense of trying to find a middle ground on how we can move forward as two boards. I think most of the community expects us to work well together. I sense that the school board feels the same way. And I'm hopeful in the near future that we'll be able to find some middle ground on a couple of the projects we're looking to do. And as I've pointed out to them and to others, you know, it's not only stormwater we need to build a relationship around, it's about having a good relationship between the two boards. So hopefully going forward, we can start working on that. So I just wanted to report on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. So I also have met with a number of District 205 members, you know, and frankly, was very encouraged after every discussion I had. I also know there's common ground for us to work with, to leave the past in the past and focus on the present, and turn to the future to serve the residents of Elmhurst to fulfill our respective objectives. As a fellow resident, that's what I expect from both our organizations. So there's so much we can accomplish together. There's, it's very clear through, after my discussions with these board members, and I welcome the opportunity to work closely with the District 205 Board. On a side note, I would like to, you know, congratulate District 205 President Cara Ciforio for delivering an excellent speech at this year's York graduation, the class of 2019. I appreciate her advice to the graduates. And I think that, you know, it was a day, a morning that I enjoyed, or afternoon that I enjoyed. And for the record, myself, you know, Alderman Hanquist, Mayor Morley, we all are proud parents of graduates of 2019. And so with that, that's, those are my comments, but I really am encouraged, and I do want us to work together to serve our residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm very encouraged by the comments that we've heard and the communication that's happened between the city and schools as well, and I'm feeling much better about it. And I feel like maybe we're going to get some common ground and get some solutions here. So it's exciting, and I'm glad it's happening. So are there any other, under other business? Any other business? Seeing none? I need a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, Alderman Sabatino, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.